Good evening. This time we're going to, uh, call our meeting to order for the Edgerton County Planning Commission West session for October eighth, twenty twenty. And we ask you please, uh, if you please wear a mask unless you've got a medical reason for it, not, uh, consideration of others. And, uh, this is the West session. We got about, uh, we got found out, so we're going, after a maximum of ten minutes for, for item on our West session here in a little bit of time for the next meeting. Uh, and those that are coming up for us before on that particular item, you sit here where you can speak into the mic, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear God, for this day, for another day to bring us one together, realize the situation what they are, but know that you are in charge, you're taking care of me, you're watching over us, and we pray that you help us to consider doing things in order and do it for the best of the kind of best to our ability and not favoritism or for our own good. We ask you the blessing, keep it in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
New business, proposal super of our major subdivision is Allison Point, I believe, is our first one that we have on our agenda. Blue Sky Priority LLC proposing development of a major subdivision, Allison Point. This subdivision will be located at intersection of Curran Town Road and Miller Road. Parker ID one twenty-six zero 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 four zero zero four, Triple R. Dave and Stuart Thompson are here. Uh, the developer, Blue Sky, Jonathan, is in this West session to, uh, discuss proposal subdivision development. So at this time, we're going to open the floor for all of us. That's your pet peeve.
As you mighty, this has become a regular affair here. Thank y'all for showing up again. We appreciate that. I do have a few questions and Chairman, if you don't mind, can I?
Yes, sir, go right here.
Uh, get along with it. I think the very first thing I'd like to, to just know for, for sure, just to make clear, I'm going to remove my mask so that you can understand and hear what I'm asking. Uh, my understanding is that there's some contention between, uh, the plat for this property and that the survey points have not been agreed to by all parties that are surrounding that area. And my suggestion is, and I think it's more of a legal issue, our lawyer, Mr. Marine, is not here, I don't believe. Uh, he may be here later, but I, that's just a, a question I have, you know?
I can address that. Um, there was a, a contention, uh, I believe with Mr. Bass. He called, uh, he, he was able to find or get Mr. Tripp Mackey to, uh, actually show our surveyor, um, some points. Our surveyor went out there, located those points. So we're, should be a good go.
Uh, it's, Mr. Bass, I think that's him in the very back there. Are you in agreement with that, Mr. Bass?
One line.
One line?
Right.
Right. You're in agreement with that line now?
In agreement with this point.
Buffer goes down the back of your house, I think is what you're talking about. What do you?
Yeah.
The hedge?
Right. Where would that go?
Well, the hedge is already there.
Hedge is already there. I don't know.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Basically, where we stand on this, um, we've, we've had the title search done, we've had the surveyors go out, they're professional, and, um, we're gonna develop to the property line that is given to us by our surveyor.
Mr. Stain, can you go ahead?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, land disputes and something over a boundary, a disagreement of where that is, is considered a land dispute, is not decided by the county, either the Planning Commission or the Building and Plan Department. That is something that's handled through civil matters courts and ultimately a surveyor is who we have to rely on to produce, uh, you know, an accurate representation of where property boundaries are. And the commission would be in considering what a surveyor submits. If a surveyor is incorrect or if there's some disagreement between surveyors, that is handled in civil court, not, uh, by the Planning Commission.
The, the surveyor that was sent by Mr. Bass had, has contacted our surveyor and they have relocated those pins and agree, come to agreement with each other and that has been redone.
Okay. If, if all, so you're saying all those things are in agreement with, with you guys and Mr. Bass, then that's?
I haven't talked to Mr. Bass since the last meeting.
Oh. Well, this was one of the things we talked about at the last meeting, but I know that's not ours. I'll get off of that point because that's, that's a legal issue that I don't, that I don't have nothing about. And I just wanted to put that out there just to see what everybody was thinking in regards to that because, you know, one of the things that I've learned here on the Planning Commission over about seven or eight years of being here is that I really like for developers to talk to the neighbors around there. It's not a requirement, it's just being a good neighbor. That's a good thing to do.
Well, we went out and we did talk to Mr. Bass, but, uh...
We actually met Mr. Bass at his house and talked to him for about, him and his son for about an hour one day.
But, but like you said, and like Kevin said, this is not a matter of, uh, we're not in the right venue for that, but we are following all the laws that are required for us to follow.
I paid for it. Let's move on. This is not...
Yeah, well, okay, we, it been informed that, you know, this is a civil matter here. We just go what you got on the paperwork, you know? Office agree with what you, everything order from the planning part, I mean, as far as the official, okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Just, just a couple of little questions to follow up, since we didn't have minutes from the last meeting to see what got transcribed, et cetera. You know, one of the things that we had talked about there was, uh, the setbacks and stuff. And one of the comments that I had made is that we, you know, we wanted a twenty-foot setback and stuff and shrubbery and, uh, you know, that ki, that kind of landscaping type things there. Uh, and I think you guys were talking about, yeah, we like that idea too. We're good neighbors. We're building a three to four hundred thousand dollar house up here and we want to have these things looking good for everybody. Okay, so that was one thing. I didn't know if that was settled. Another question we had was about the HOA. You're drafting an HOA, we, and I, I would, it's not a requirement, but it sure would be nice that all homeowners, when they buy a lot in there, get a copy of the HOA, they will have to have it. And, you know, now with, uh, uh, it's not up to county standards for that road that's in there, that'll be a private road. And, uh, just been some rulings by South Carolina that they cannot, school buses can't come down that road unless everyone in there totally agrees to have a school bus go in there. So, just a couple of things like that. I don't know where we even stand on any of those things, but they're without, they're outside of the Planning Commission, but I think they're points of interest for the public.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, the applicants have provided us with their bylaws of the HOA, um, the draft covenants, um, as well as, we have a letter from the Historical Society stating their willingness to accept the property with the treaty. And we have had the county attorney review the private roads within the covenants and found them to be to the county standards and clearly denote that the private property is responsible for the maintenance.
Okay.
So at this point, they've met all the requirement that we have for?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good. You have anything, Kevin? You have anything?
Has the discrepancy in the number of acres been solved between tax assessor plat, what's in the plat, what's in the contract, what's, what do you have there? I know there was some issues on the number of acres, somewhere between forty some, forty something and fifty-one or something like that. I don't remember the numbers.
Well, we, we have our surveyor go out and like Kevin said, this is a licensed, you know, person. This is what, what we depend on. And what's on our paperwork is what they've calculated is correct. And I don't know if y'all know this, but nine times out of ten, the drawing and a lot of the information on the tax records, records is not always accurate.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The process as it is handled by the county and the tax assessor's office is when a survey is recorded, um, at the register of deeds, uh, they will send down updated mapping to the tax assessor's office where that will be adjusted when corrections are needed. I don't, I can't tell you how long that process typically takes. Um, I do know that they have had several boundary surveys done. I do not know if they've had those recorded. Uh, if they have had recorded, eventually the tax assessor maps will be updated to reflect any needed changes.
Okay.
And I'd also like to add, when we do our final plat, that also is recorded, like he said, the final plat.
Um, is, is the HOA going to be responsible for the dam that's down there in the, uh, one of the large ponds?
Yes.
Yes?
That is going to be covered through the HOA.
Just one thing, comment that we had from the last meeting is that, uh, the, the, the land, the road going down then accesses the last, uh, four lots down here, is, is that a paved road or is that access?
We were, we were going to pave it down the access to the end of the last two lots.
The last cul-de-sac?
To the end of the last two lots. Right before you get to the pond.
Comment from the cul-de-sac, right?
Well, it wouldn't be a cul-de-sac because it's a...
I know about that. It connect to the cul-de-sac, right? Okay, good.
And then the HOA could decide to go from there with, uh, any amenities they'd like to add to the subdivision.
Okay, so those, it comes down to there.
To the next property.
Right there.
No, to the next one.
And then it comes down to there? Okay, all right, that's...
The full distance of the access road.
I just wanted to clarify that thing because we had talked about the last time. Uh, and then the, the points for, uh, the land that'll be around the Magnolia tree, those will be delineated and marked.
It's, it's actually going to be considered an extra lot and then we just deed it to them.
Okay, I understand.
It's actually written in our covenants at this time that they're actually going to be part or they will be able to attend any HOA meetings, but they're not going to pay any dues.
Imagine the school buses could probably be handled in a similar manner.
Yeah, well, we can...
I imagine we can draft it in there when we own all the lots that all the school buses can come in. And the only way that changes is if it gets re-voted. Does not be a vote, I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay. Any more? We got to move on to the next survey. Our mind clear on this one? Okay, appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Next is our proposed land development of Sporting and Boat and RV Storage. Fly's and Pickett LLC are proposing the development of an outside self-storage facility, Sporting and Boat and RV Storage. This development would be located off of Martin Town Road near Sporting Corner, Parker zero eighty, zero 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 one, zero ninety-eight, Triple R, Hart and Ben Bartley. Are you here? Actually, yeah. Developer Fly's and Pickett are here, Jonathan's now, so any discussion from paneling?
Appreciate you gentlemen coming back. That's, this also seems like we have everything down in my district, seems like, so, uh, it's good to be in Meriwether, you know? Uh, have, the question I ask again to the other, the other developers too, have you talked with your landowners that are adjacent to your property there where you're proposing to do this?
No, no, sir.
You haven't? Do you know who they are?
Yes, sir, Mr. John Hudson is next to us.
I believe Mr. Hudson is in the back there, you know? Okay. Uh, like I said, it's just being a good steward of the environment and good steward of the county. I think that's a good thing, but you hadn't talked to him beforehand?
Right.
You knew who he was, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have, uh, I know we don't have the minutes, but at the last meeting, we talked about some modifications to that. Did you, or suggested modifications for safety and people pulling off the highway and stuff and getting a long trailer? Can you discuss those things?
Yes, sir. I believe it was suggested that we make sure the gate was a significant difference, distance from Martin Town Road with folks pulling in and out with long, uh, trailers and this type thing. So the gate will be one hundred and twenty feet from, uh, Martin Town Road. So that should allow for sufficient, uh, distance for any length camper that would be or boat that would be pulling in there.
Maybe the drawing that I have that was sent by Kevin says seventy-five foot on this one.
Yes, sir. We, we, there will be an updated drawing.
Oh, you're, oh, okay. So this isn't the updated?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Um, have you, um, considered paving that, uh, that entrance versus gravel?
That entrance will be paved, yes, sir. One hundred and twenty feet to the gate.
Uh, just another que, uh, will the, uh, and I think you're going to use like a, a rock, uh, for the surface area back there, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And your drainage system, since you, I, I did finally drive by and look at that land. It is a little slope to it. Uh, are you familiar with the flooding that has occurred out in that particular area, especially right across the road? Even that parts of Martin Town Road has flooded at times, right, where you're...
There is a one, one or two floodplain in that area, yes, sir.
So, uh, so you're familiar with that?
Yes, sir, we are aware of it. We won't be anywhere near that.
And your, uh, detention pond, it, it, you know, to me, it looks like your flowing water looks like it's flowing uphill, you know, to me, because Martin Town Road is lower than the back part.
Yes, sir, but it levels out up there on top. Did you walk the land?
I've walked just barely a little bit, not enough to say I've really walked it, but... Uh, so you think that will, after about a hundred feet, that does flatten out and it does get, does get level so the grade will flow the other way?
It will be graded to take care of that.
Okay. So, and the overflow from that detention will, it'll hopefully, a detention means it'll stay there and just either go into the ground, not overflow anywhere.
Right.
Okay.
Any, any comment from the officials?
No, Mr. Chairman.
This is a West session now. You have prop, you have a chance to write later.
Uh, there will be, uh, you, you're going to do the screening like we talked about up there, uh, along your, your property lines. You're going to leave so much there, so between your, your facility and the, the landowners next door, you would have that so that they could see some kind of protection.
Right.
And there shouldn't be any noise up there, is that correct?
Right.
Not be, and it's going to be lined with cedars, uh, for privacy and to kind of give up, um, some buffer in between the land.
Okay, okay. Maybe during, uh, uh, after time, you could talk to Mr. Hudson and maybe just tell him what you plan to do.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
Now, uh, this is a, I, I'm, I'm familiar. Now, there's going to be a, a cover, it's going to be shared type or just open?
It's be open.
Open?
Yes, open.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll make sure that you got different types.
The possibility of expansion down the road.
Right.
That may have some covered ones.
Yes, sir, okay. Anybody else? Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next is our proposal of a major subdivision with Anthony Cole and JSMG Development LLC is proposing development of a major subdivision, Anthony Cole. This subdivision will be located off Woodlawn Lake Road, Parker ID one six three zero zero five one zero two five zero zero zero. Gary, tip in the, uh, development, is he here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With the, it has Jonathan on this, so, uh... Kevin, uh, I think I, I know from you on the FAA, they have, under that status is this, okay?
Yes, sir. A, a entity that the county recently became acquainted with is the South Carolina Airnotics Commission. Um, they do a review of properties and developments, uh, within a certain proximity of public use airports. Um, we have submitted this application, uh, to them for their review and received a conditional use compatibility, uh, report in return. Um, they have requested that we reapply since the property has recently changed ownerships. Um, I shared with you a z, a map of their zones. Um, only the compatibility use applies to a certain section, which is Zone C on this property, which... is on these southern lots here on the bottom portion. Um, the condition that it recommends is a density of no greater than, uh, one unit per acre. Um, as you will note, these are twenty thousand square foot lots, which do not meet that condition. However, having spoken to their planner, it is a instance of home rule. So if it meets the zoning requirements, you know, you as the Planning Commission can approve it. Um, you, and if the Airnots Commission wished to, they could challenge that in a court. Uh, that would be an option that would be available to them. Um, however, I do not know if they would or would not. Um, I know the developer has spoken with David Smith, the planner for the Airnots Commission, and feels comfortable with the plan as it is, having spoken to him.
So right now, you have, you don't have an open application with them, everything being up to date right now?
So, but yes, they concluded and gave us a conditional use compatibility, uh, on this application and have asked that we reapply so that the information be updated to represent the new property owner.
Question, what it, what is that? Is that Rachel Drive that's coming down there in the middle or...
That is not Rachel Drive. That would be a road that would be within this development. However, the lots that are behind these, they do front on Rachel Avenue.
Is that in Eaton County or Edgefield?
It is not. Those lots are in Edgefield County. I will pull up the GIS so that we can look at those.
Okay. Because I did drive up there and I, and I was not that familiar with that, but they're building a lot of houses over there off of Rachel Drive and I don't remember when those were approved. This is before, maybe I was on the commission.
The Rachel Avenue subdivision was one that was reviewed earlier this year by the commission, I believe in March.
That's all right.
The property I have highlighted is the one that is before you and you can see Rachel Avenue just below it.
And there's the airstrip.
So now...
Unique area. Very much.
So the, don't you, any of your lot, your lots come up to the, uh, the runway driveway, right? The, any of your lot, you go, you know, you got the, not the actual runway, but you, you know, you got the taxi for the individual home, the homes in there that have the, uh, their own planes. So if you go down, your lot will back up to that, right?
Ansley Cove does not back up to the taxiway.
No, 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 okay, all right, okay, okay, all right.
To, to avoid any confusion, I will state that, uh, our developer is one of the builders on Rachel Avenue, so there can be some confusion about what's being discussed. Ansley Cove, as he stated, does not, uh, front on the taxiway that is Rachel Avenue.
No comment, question? Do you have any? Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, sir. Okay, next we have, we got that out of the way. Proposal of major subdivision with the Mad Drive. Aiken Highland Center proposing development for major subdivision Mad Drive. This subdivision will be located off Highway nineteen, Parker ID one eighty-six zero 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 nine five zero zero. Uh, uh, you the representative for this group? You state your name, please.
Scott Brentson.
Jennifer Hurt.
You are the, uh, developer for this area, the contractor of it?
Seller of the home that's going on the property.
What we got?
Is this, uh, is this the piece of property? I'm, I hope I'm looking at the right one. That was a six acre tract and now you're taking off a two acre piece of it?
It was twelve total.
Oh, was it?
Twenty-two.
Okay. So, I drove over there and actually you can't see anything back there because there is no roads, anything back in there.
It's a gravel road that comes off of, um, nineteen right here.
Right. Yeah, well, I was, I, I didn't want to drive down that gravel road.
It's all the way in the back. It's overgrown. We got to bush hog it, clean it up, but they started clearing trees on it.
Okay. Okay. What do you, tell us what you want to do.
Okay, and what we've done, we, we've talked to all the neighbors. All the neighbors are acceptable to doing this. And, um, it's a thirty foot easement that needs to go to a fifty foot easement and they've all said that they would agree to, to do that, to grant the easement to, uh, Mr. and Miss Meriwether. But it is a gravel road back there and, and it's a nice, you know, established gravel road. And you got plenty of room for it to be wide enough to, to pass, for people to pass. And this is a lot of, um, they're, they're family land back here and what they did is just cut the two acres off in the back to just be able to access. We can't do it unless it's a fifty foot road. But they've agreed to do that.
Okay, okay.
I'm trying to pin the exact location. It, uh, do, do it, but it doesn't border Highway nineteen, right? I do it, I'm trying to see from the map I was...
Mr. Chairman, this fronts on Highway nineteen.
GIS map up. I think there's a, a church just down the road from there.
It is.
Okay, I'll call the road. So you come up and call it in, come up, okay. It's going back down towards the...
What is that? It's a Baptist church or I?
I think it's a Baptist church.
This road they're talking about.
You should have it here in a second.
It's a well-established road.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's Courtney right there.
I mean, nineteen is very...
Okay, there's a bunch of dead roads in there. I'm trying to figure out what, where the mayor's there. And that's the Meriwether property. I think I, I got you right, okay.
And you're going to build a new home?
I will put in a, a single wide manufactured home over there.
Okay.
And the Meriwethers in here was...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is one of those instances where it is a major subdivision by definition, since it creates a road.
Right.
Uh, so that is why it's before you tonight. Though it's only a single lot.
So it definitely going, okay.
Yes.
All right. Got a little confused on that, but I got it. I know exactly where you are now. I got you, okay. Any more?
No further questions?
That my last item? I think that's all them on there, so... You have anything else from officials, right?
Um, I will just add that, uh, they have filled out, um, all the property owners' private road maintenance agreements that have been reviewed by the county attorney and approved, uh, that if approved tonight will be recorded and included as part of the development. Okay?
Okay, good, good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I'm being told that, you know, we have an item E on the agenda, so please do not skip item E before adjournment.
Oh, okay, well, you have an item E?
E, yeah. We have one more. Another boat storage facility.
Oh, okay. I done skipped over a page. I was trying, I thought something wrong. I couldn't understand what the heck. So I'm sorry about that. I ain't going to the next page. Okay, potential land development, uh, corner boat storage. Corner boat storage, sorry about that. Corner boat storage LLC is considering proposing the development of an outdoor self-storage facility. And this development will be located off Woodlawn Road near the intersection of Martin Town Road, Parker ID zero eighty, zero 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 one, zero five seven, Triple R, Ken, is that Kendrick? Kendrick, okay, okay. Development with corner boat storage and Aaron Ingram from, um, Steven Creek Engineer. It's a project engineer, so, so both of you are here now? Okay, so, uh, you want to, uh, kind of inform us on what we got here?
Okay, so the, uh, overall project, uh, I'm the project engineer. I work for Mr. Kendrick. Um, it's a six point four acre parcel. Um, we're developing a portion of it right now, um, create fifty-four RV boat trailer parking areas. Very similar to the boat storage we just previously spoke about. Um, we have a significant setback off the road. We've included the proper buffer areas. It'll be fenced, it'll be lit. We're here at the workshop today to get any comments or questions, so when we come back next month, hopefully get approval of flying color.
So you right behind the store that in, right, on Woodlawn?
Yes, sir. You can see that copy of that GIS map that I laid up there.
If you turn on that and that between the store and the, and the creek.
Yes, sir.
Okay, right. Okay, right.
Will this be below the retention basin that's there? I just went by there yesterday and took a.
You can see it on the, on the, if Kevin has a drawing up there. Yeah, you see the corner retention pond?
Right, okay, yeah, there it is.
That pond by law can't discharge on this property, so it's of no concern.
Right, it's supposed to hold it, and then just, and, you know, you would know, has it ever been a problem there? That detention basin? Now, the other question, the only, the only concern, are you gonna put any fill in there?
Well, the plan was to bring it around from the other side of the property on the, we'll make the site balance, yeah.
And you'll stay out of the wetlands?
Yes, there are the, the NWI wetland inventory and the FEMA flood plan are well below this area.
That's, you know, two hundred yards from Stevens Creek?
Yes, I got a copy of the topographic map, and I can show you where the flood plan is, but we're at least a hundred feet from it.
That'd be interesting, yeah.
One seventy-three, okay.
Okay. And your main entrance is gonna be off of Woodlawn?
Yes, that's correct.
And so it'd just be like the other one, hey, your design for parking's a little different than what they had. It's gonna be very similar, you're gonna just drive in, flow around like that. Covered structure or anything in there?
I think that will come at a future stage possibly. When we do the de-hacks, the middle stuff, or runoff coefficients and stuff, we'll consider covered. The owner can answer if he's gonna build it at this point or not. Yeah, we're just kind of seeing how it goes as far as what kind of hula hoops we gotta jump through.
If you, if it is covered, a metal roof or something there, then that changes the kind of runoff, doesn't it?
Correct, so we're gonna permit it a maximum runoff, so we don't have to go back to de-hec. We're gonna permit the whole six point four acres with the maximum amount covered, so we don't ever have to mess with de-hec again. Pond will be sized appropriately.
Okay.
So if you go with the cover, I mean, like, if you have a concrete base at the end, right? Are you gonna take gravel?
Well, we hadn't decided on that yet, but we had talked about pouring concrete up under the covered part if we do it.
I see, you know, I see a lot of them going up, and it can be all over the country, people putting them up, and some were pouring slabs, and some just leaving it, you know, go back later, or whatever.
Does your entrance way also have a sufficient space in order to get a?
Seventy-five foot setback, which is more than adequate.
Get a big trailer with a big eighty foot camper behind it?
If you got an eighty foot camper, invite me on vacation. No, sir, in all honesty, seventy-five foot's what you'd use for an eighteen wheeler, so that's what I used to here. That's how all these, that's how this whole parking lot's modeled.
Eighteen wheeler, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with that topography.
Yeah.
Is that, is that pretty flat going in there, is it?
Is that about twenty, or about ten foot all across the property, and you're welcome to keep that?
And that's gonna be all gravel? The driveway going in?
Yeah, if it's an empty night, earth would be moved to a graded.
Go right there.
The ideal slope on gravel is about two percent, so there'll be some cutting field to make it work properly.
Well, I don't know, I'd like to see that, personally, I'd like to see that paved, just because of the stone that comes out of there onto the streets.
Sure, and that's something we could discuss with the owner, paving the entrance seventy-five feet. I don't think that's a counter requirement, it's not an engineering best practice that I understand from public concern.
I just don't like that gravel going out in the street.
Is this, Kyle, an agreement for you to buy a certain amount of that property?
Yes, sir, I got a contract on six point four acres of.
Okay, I understand, cause that's a, their property kind of straddles all of Montown Road and up through there and all, so. Okay, good, good.
And I've talked to the boardroom property owners.
What about Sprint?
I haven't talked to them, but I think they're all right with me.
Really, have you got, got to do a lot of grading in there, I'm trying to, I know vegetation over there now, I can't exactly tell what's what, you know, but you gonna?
There's, there's just a few spots that are, you know, not perfect, but there's enough dirt on site just to move it around to make it work.
Will the overall height, will you think you'll bring it up a little bit, with Woodlawn Road, maybe pretty much level where Woodlawn is, so that, that's what, that's your plan?
That seventy-five foot will be your transition to get there, more or less.
Okay, okay.
But it'll be above Woodlawn.
You say you'll be above?
Just quick math here, that's how much dirt, about eight hundred cubic yards, not that bad.
Completely fenced around there, this thing?
Yes, sir.
I see the, I can see it good on this drawing here, this is a nice one. Vegetation, are you gonna do anything different down at the entrance way on there? Are you gonna have a sign or things like that down there to designate what it is?
Yes, sir, at some point, we're gonna put a, put a sign.
Okay.
Any more comment, question?
I think we're excited to have all these boat storage things in the area over here. It seems like it's the hot item going in Edgefield County right now.
They're going in a lot of counties, McCormick County, gotta put them up, fill them up as fast as they go up on Motocross Road and Parkville, you notice that? That's why I was concerned about, you know, you had those. In your construction, now, you, the heck require you to put up your, it's bad to keep runoff and all that? That's it, okay, all right.
Once you move to the next, then you have to get de-hec involved. No sanitary facilities in there, no overnight place for anyone to stay, nothing like that.
Any more? Okay, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Back on base now, yeah. Anything else from West Side, anything about it? Not, we, we adjourn, we'll call this meeting to adjournment, we'll start back at six o'clock for our regular meeting. Meeting adjourned. I don't know how I got that page, I flipped my page on. I kept looking, I knew something wrong. No, I, it not. Well, well, see, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't come back to it with anything yet.
Gotta ask Mr. Murray.
God, that was just a proposal, and they haven't, they haven't built anything else like that. I ain't get to tell it, talk to Smitty yet, I don't know what, you know. Oh, he can't, he can't.
We oughta ask him before, I don't wanna be caught, you know, without being able to discuss this. I'm a little concerned about that. I don't know what to put, I'm so nervous about this.
He's stuck there, okay. Yeah, I talked with, what's his name out there, Brian, William Brian, I talked with him, I talked with a lot of people in the area, you know, see. Yeah, I see that, right, yeah, I'm hanging on to that, I keep it fired up. Greenwood County, they working on one, I keeping up with them on that. They making them put up a escrow, demolition escrow, so they go out, get that car, that gonna be a lot of, clean that up not gonna be easy, cause you know, they got power drive driving them, I've been watching one building up on two twenty-one, and they got power drive driving those things and driving. That's what I'm saying, you know. I mean, that's gonna be a mess. And see, the battery, like, no battery, they, they don't last for so many years, you recharge them, and then they gone out now. Like I said, on two twenty-one, I'm watching, when I go by there every couple days, checking on it, they building this thing. Nah, I get to, I be out there, you told me, bring my net, I don't need no bait, right? Oh, you got bait, huh? Oh, okay. Okay, all right, man. Well, I'm glad you want a fellow don't let money, you know. But it, it. Yeah, I've been going, he's like, you know. Well, you know, after I started about it, you know, quarter barn, this lady lived up there off of, by Gasaway Church up there, you said, years ago. I done some work for her, this thirty-five, forty years ago, and she said, we relatives, you know, and we got to talking, and she explained to me, I forgot about it. Yeah, she was, she was a quarter barn, I forgot who she was, but it was about forty years ago almost. And she lived in that brick house right before you got to Gasaway, and I done some work, and we were talking, she said, hey, cuz, we got to talking, you know, and she explained. And then you brought that up to me, I forgot about it. I had too.
I mean, we all some kids, somewhere along the way.
Yeah, yeah. My daddy did it, okay.
That's close, that's close.
But I hope we can block that out. I'm gonna do all I can, but I didn't know, it's just a site for so high. I wind up there, they're down the middle of nowhere, but I had faith in the highway, it just gonna be, you go long, you gotta look at that mare. When you go to Salute, you gotta look at that mare.
That one down nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, right. So did, I remember you told me that, that's right.
I gotta, I gotta try to digest all of this. I gotta really open my eyes a little bit, because my day job is to do this, and so.
And I think that's the same outfit in Greenwood, I believe it is. I gotta check with some of those committee members, see what's what, anyway, they come up with it. Cause like I say, they driving those, they driving those thing eight and ten feet in the ground, how you gonna get that steel back up there? I mean, they got power drive, you hear that?
And I don't know.
They kill it, we gone.
They get their money, that's it.
They kill it, I don't know.
You know, these trees, you pour them up, you gotta pour that steel up.
I called the clam, or whatever you call it, that musk, that musk, we actually doing, yeah, musk, yeah, I had to go get them out the creek. But I, you know, I keep you informed, and I be at that Kevin feed.
Yes, sir, Jerry Smith? Really? It looks, it's a, it's a different view when you go out and you look at the place. And especially, I had not really, I've been by the airport, everybody's been by that airport over there, but I did not realize, that's a very unique development in there, because they put the airplanes in, like Fab was saying, they got all the planes in.
When you go in and move in all in there, see that, you gotta get where the air, air.
Aircraft, yeah.
Aircraft, yeah, do an aircraft, cause see, I'm familiar with that, I got a friend in there.
Yeah.
She still driving?
Oh, wow.
Parking your car, you park your airplane.
Aircraft, come out and go on, you know, when it's hot.
Well, that's, that's, in a sense, that's what this is, they have their own, their huge projects, they're as wide as this building, you know, I mean, you know, but that was, that was unique, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll be out there. Oh, okay, yeah, I ate some sun, you know, that was. Okay, when do you be home, anytime? Okay, I just shoot, I shoot till I call you, then I got your number. Okay, now I'm gonna put on my feet, okay, eight oh three. All right, wait, oh, shit. Eight oh three. Six three seven. Zero seven thirty. All right, okay. Yeah, okay. Your L M still living? Say there? Oh, y'all can't?
I'll tell you later.
Oh, Blaine? Oh, that good, huh? Oh, I'll get an ass where this heavy, uh-huh. All right, appreciate it, thank you. See, they didn't tell us the whole story back then, so.
I, I'm learning a lot, I get, I don't speak very much, I just take, you know, play a woman's part, 'til I learn everything, and I speak.
That's right, that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
And, and all of a sudden, out of nowhere, will some come some thought-provoking question that you ask, and all the men will go, where'd that come from?
I almost had one to dance, and I'm gonna, and my buddy asked it.
So, you know.
It'll come, it'll come.
How are you, Mr. Burke?
I'm doing fine, doing fine. I told him, I don't go yet, I really got my heart wet in the cup, and no problem. Yeah, I told, I told him. I wonder how many they shout together, and shout. What do you think, they have one there? You might show it, you might show it. How you like the county signs, they get? You seen them?
They're kind of small, but they're.
I want, they need to put one on all, I'm telling you, over the county road.
I don't want them coming in, exactly.
I wonder how, yeah, I see them, I said, look, I thought I had another item here, something I was looking right there.
Cause you know, when we first started, you said we got five.
Uh-huh, I looked over here, the way I'm attached. I haven't been out here yet, to put it up.
I'm afraid when I come down through that, and the light be on green somewhere.
Cause the bolt tie they put, they had more wrecks after the light there.
You know what, but I, I can see a wreck happening, I, I really can. They did better when you just had it flashing.
Yeah, we got so much of vows in our neighborhood, big, then, well, at the farm up there, we had one lady pass down the road, and just, and tan them up. Yeah, we got so much of vows in our neighborhood, big, then, well, at the farm up there, we had one lady pass down the road, and just, just turn them up. Yeah, I talked real early, I told him I don't know where to get, you know, cause I leave here, I think, if I get a road, I lose contact, you know, that get me on the outside, take, we go nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
I know what he'll be saying, it gonna be a long meeting, I had probably. It might not be hard to you. Probably, yeah, ten, twenty minutes.
Yeah, I talk together.
See, I call it, it's, it's, cause see, I, they got, they find, but I be involved, you know, a lot of stuff, you gotta black and white like that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's really, that's true, but I tell you, they come back and bat your legs though.
Yeah, if I sent, you know, this copy to many people, that's the problem, I mean, that's, you knew what I was trying, so, I should have just sent back. Kevin, for you. And there's so much business going on, and, you know.
Cause you can even go back and see what.
You got, you got to play all that.
Yeah, right, and that's the, the, right, you know, and this is the person I've ever had, possibly, we didn't get to know this.
You got to sit down, you got to, you got to, you know, put, put the tea out.
Right, it's hard to do, there's no doubt, I would not want to die in the job, having to translate. Yeah.
But, you know what, sorry, did you get some nicotine, brother?
I did.
Well.
I, um.
He was a smart guy, he was a smart guy, and we were doing a whole lot more than what I did.
This particular piece of property, isn't it currently, and isn't it on the side of the road that would be where the works of revision, like, the size lots, when zoning happens?
Yeah, and we miss something, you know, but if they could have changed, we would, we think is an opportunity, that's what's, they got.
Why, and is it, is it, yes, still needs to be, yes, right, and I'm tracking that part, but in the, in the comprehensive one. This, this piece of property we're talking about, in an area that would allow, whatever, it's, it's.
Two to one on motor, that got, so, you got one.
According to the comprehensive plan.
He is not here, I do not, I don't know, I, I don't, I'm not sure what happened.
The acts of.
Oh, he got, he got.
I'm just getting. Sausage making part, but, I mean, clearly, it's unfortunate that the comprehensive plan was done so far in advance of the management, and it's just, what should have happened is two, one should have fallen right behind the other.
Shut it down.
I mean, those types of things, those story, Jerry, you know, they're kind of benign, residents, they're, they're, this is what they help get, but.
Right, yes, yes, yeah. Yes.
They look like that.
I get replaced in the spring, as a result of that, really? And writes articles.
One comes on down.
Okay, well, they may be all, just because we're not.
Yes, we fixed that missing one. Along with the other mic.
If you would like to speak during the public hearing, please make sure you assign the sign in sheet and check to s- speak during the public hearing, thank you.
You're, you're sure about that?
Let's see, yeah.
But you think, you're pretty sure.
All right, we're about to, you about really kidding?
Yeah.
The calling meeting to order for the F P County Planning Commission, it's at our business meeting tonight, and, uh, for October eighth, twenty twenty. Appreciate all of you, President, uh, we going to, uh, have approve our minutes for October eighth, for that meeting tonight, got an approval for that agenda for tonight.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, that'd be an approval of the agenda.
Everybody favor the agenda, right, right hand. Now, we're gonna go, we got, we have public here, we have full public here, here, and, uh.
Mr. Chairman, could we get a vote on the approval of the agenda, please?
Oh, I thought we did, we did.
You have a motion, though.
Yeah, yes, we need a, we need a motion.
You made the mo, oh, oh, I said, oh, I was just wondering about, I'm sorry, yeah, I need a motion for, uh, approval of the agenda for.
So moved.
Second, motion second, all in favor, right hand, I'm sorry, Ken, I was thinking, I know, I, how you make the motion, that's, okay. Okay, we have public here, and we have full public here, here tonight, and then, and, uh, if you, uh, list to, uh, speak, I think anybody got checked that it wants to speak, right? And we're gonna ask you to come up to the mic, state your name, and give you three minutes, stay on the subject, and order it. Our first approval, our first, I wanted to add some point, co- public comment, anyone have a comment, that's, that we got, uh, Jerry Moody, is you on for the, uh, add some point? Okay, come up.
My name is Jerry Moody, and first of all, I'd just like to thank y'all for giving the time and thought into the subdivision, but I would love, uh, we're not against the subdivision being built, but we want it to have the same qualities and attributes of the city division, subdivisions already in the area. This includes trees between the houses, landscaped entrance, county maintained road, as well as acre plus lots. But before this subdivision can be approved, there's two items I would like to bring to your attention, of course, the first one was covered a while ago, and y'all said it's supposed to be a civil action, but I'm gonna bring it up again. Mr. Latham paid taxes on forty-one point two acres, the deed in which the land was bought, which was surveyed by Mr. Gore, shows forty-six point three acres, and then the development plot shows fifty-one point forty-three acres. So my question is, how can you vote on a development where there's controversy in the amount of land there actually is to develop? We hired a surveyor, as mentioned before, he came out, shot one property line, and found two controversy areas. Our surveyor called Mr. Gore, and they talked about some things, and Mr. Gore gave his response, quote, unquote. We were unable to find all the property markers, so we did the best we could, and I'm asking y'all, would it make sense to get this issue resolved now, instead of in a court of law? Because we will go to court over the discrepancy between the acres. Second thing, don't know whether y'all know it or not, but the dam has a leak in it. I sent pictures to Mr. Secretary last week, two weeks ago, he said that's a dehack issue. Well, I had dehack come down there, the dam is two feet from being regulated, it takes twenty-five feet for a dam to be regulated, that dam's twenty-three feet. It's leaking roughly a gallon and a half a minute onto my property, backside of my property, I cannot reach with my tractor because of this water. So, just wanna let y'all become aware of that, in closing, I'm asking y'all to hold off on voting on this issue until the acreage, acreage of the property can be determined, and what's going to be done about the leaking dam. Also, I invite each one of y'all to come down there and witness and walk the property, don't just ride by it and look at the beauty and the trees and nature that is down there. Thank y'all for your time.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's see, uh, it did Harmon Thompson, uh, Harmon, Harmon.
My name is Herman Thompson, and, and I own the property adjacent to Mr. Bass and Mr. Latham, the land is behind it. And I probably know that property better than anybody else, cause it's been in my family for over fifty years. One of the things that's unique about this piece of property is I, I run a small business down there, I have a produce business, and it's called Flowing Springs Family Farm. And it's named that because of the one characteristic of that land is how many flowing springs it has on it. There are three major springs that come off the Latham property that feed my property, okay? Five years ago, my dam broke because of excessive water, I had to replace it, and I often wondered why. They could build a dam down there because all the land was sand. Well, if you stand on my dam, looking at the back of the fish camp and to the right, you'll find nothing but sand land, and I wondered, how in the world could they build a dam? When I went over at my hayfield, and we started excavating, we found that that was sand clay, and so they pulled the sand clay in there. One of the things that's unique about this piece of property is, it's got a tremendous watershed on it. In the fifty years that that pond has been there before it broke, it has never dropped one inch of water in fifty years. I pump water out of it to irrigate my crops. Most people who come out there and look at that property say, it's amazing how much water you have running in here. And I said, it's true, because here's what happens, if you go down there and look, you'll find if you ride down Mealing Road, you've got clay land. And that land changes right there dramatically, it changes. My concern is this, and this is why I'm here today to go on record, I'm having my water test to make sure that it's pure as I think it is, and I know it is, it's all spring water. But when they put those houses in up there, and those septic tanks get in there, I know where that water's coming. It's gonna funnel into the fish camp pond, it's gonna funnel into Mr. Moody's pond, and it's gonna funnel into my pond. And I wanted to go on record here today as saying, if that happens, and I'm gonna run that water test continually after those houses are put in there, then I'll have to take legal steps to, to stop that. I mean, to, to reoccur, I mean, to help me with my problem. I think if you just vote on this piece of property as though it's any piece of property, it's not. There's enormous amount of water that comes off of that hill. Uh, when my, when my pond broke, and I asked the man, I said, how long do you think it'll take for my pond to be rebuilt, to be filled up? He said, six to eight weeks, it was full in two weeks, and I put fishing. Every time it rains, before we have a major rain, if you come down and look at my pond, you will find that I have two major runarounds that run around that pond. I also have installed two cycling hoses that put on it. If I hear there's gonna be a storm coming, I have to go out and suck, I got a four inch line and a three inch line, and I have to drop that pond down at least two feet to keep all the water that comes into that pond. Uh, that's what I'm here today to tell you is, I know, and I'm not against the subdivision, and I'm not against Mr. Thompson building that subdivision, but I can tell you one thing, that water is gonna be a problem. And I wanted to go on record tonight stating that, so when something happens, when I come back, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. It is a hit, uh, Yanni hit, uh, yeah, you, you on this, uh, the same? Okay. You come up, you gonna do the talk, or you come?
Um, I'm just gonna read a letter that my dad, Jerry Bass, wrote. Um, it says, my name is Jerry Bass, and I love living in Edgefield County. My family and I moved to Edgefield County about forty-four years ago to open Old McDonald's Fish Camp. Um, there have been many businesses in the last forty years that have closed, but we are still doing well. The people of Edgefield have been good to us, but a lot of our business come out of Edgefield County. Many people comment on the beautiful surroundings, and we would love to keep it that way. It is a shame that, uh, na- uh, neighboring property owners have had to spend their money to obtain lawyers and surveyors to resolve the bounty lines, um, and the environmental guidelines. It seems like no one is working for us, the citizens of Edgefield County. Um, our surveyor called the company that did the survey for Blue, Blue Sky, and their response was, he did the best he could. He tried to find all the markings, but there were several mistakes in his survey, according to our survey. Um, I talked to one of the investors, he said that they had a private meeting with the council, I don't know who he was talking about, and they assured him it would all be approved at this meeting tonight. He said if it was not approved, they would sue the county. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, let's see, is there anyone else on this, I think this? Jack, oh, okay, Jackie, that was, okay, yeah, Jackie Bass, go ahead.
Let me begin by saying, this is a beautiful piece of land.
Say your name, I'm for.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jackie Bass. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jackie Bass. Okay. Is that all you need?
You got it, yes, ma'am.
Let me begin by saying, this is a beautiful piece of land. It has been, it has many trees and lots of wildlife, deer, turkeys, ducks, and there's even been an eagle that was spotted on the land. God gave us the earth to protect. He cares for His creation, and He expects us to do the same, but we are destroying it. Um, if all the developing continues in Edgefield County will not be the beautiful rural county we know and love, there will be one, there will be no wildlife and very few trees, just houses, buildings, concrete, and lots of traffic. Genesis two, four fifteen says, "The Lord ta- took the man and put him in the garden of Eden, and to work it and take care of it," but we're not doing that.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. That is out.
We have one written submitted comment.
Okay, go ahead.
This is from Patricia Lee, four twenty-five Curry Town Road. "I'm requesting that any voting on subdivisions in the Merriweather area be postponed until after January first, for the same reasons that the LMO has been postponed. People are afraid slash told not to attend meetings due to COVID, so their voices are not being heard. Give them time to be heard. The Edgefield Advertiser, Merriweather Coalition, North Augusta, twenty twenty, all show massive support for not wanting Edgefield County to be high density. As commission members, you should be paying attention to all the citizens. You should already be aware that a petition is being circulated to change the language of the, on the conference of plan, back to the verbiage that was, that prohibits high density. COVID slowed down that process. Another COVID effect, reasons to delay any approvals until after the first of the year. The lawyer who spoke at the last meeting tried to scare you with litigation. He failed to remind you that you represent the citizens, not just pieces of paper created by a handful of elected slash appointed officials. The citizens should be listened to. Wait until after January first and give their voices time to be heard. Although I appreciate the adjustments the Thompsons made to the proposed plat, the one acre lots are so narrow that it has had, has the same effect of high density and still does not fit the neighborhood. The houses will be on top of each other." She also said in an additional comment, that was a uh, resubmission of what she had said the last time. Development at Mealing and Curry Town, one. The homes on all the roads in this area are on acreage or very large lots. The density in this development would not be in keeping with the area. Two, I live on the twenty acres across the road from where the sub, the subdivision. I run a small horse boarding facility. I would have to worry about trespassers, probably children wanting to pet horses, and additional noise affecting the horses. Three, this crossroads is very dangerous, both from those running the stop signs and the short line of sight to the curve for those pulling out. Traffic heading towards the fish camp fly past my house, so fast that those pulling out of Mealing Road are in jeopardy. Accident data that I have seen cannot possibly be accurate as to the number of wrecks at the crossroads. My forty years at this location knows that. This subdivision would be, would add to the traffic and accidents. And no, a roundabout would not correct this problem. Eighteen-wheelers and vehicles pulling campers are a constant through that intersection, and roundabouts are not large enough to handle this type of traffic. Plus, I am not willing to sell any of my property to accomplish that. Four, what will the language of the already approved subdivisions have on my future taxes? The need for increased police protection, the need for larger schools, taxes in general. Land management ordinance. I'm opposed to zoning. Zoning walks all over property rights. I moved here forty-one years ago for the rural feel, the freedom to do with my land what I wanted, to have horses or any farm animals I choose. Years after moving here, the citizens of Merriweather community fought an effort at zoning, even had a citizen meeting at the fish camp about it. Somehow zoning has appeared without my knowledge, to the result in researching my property after learning about the subdivision. I found that my property is not only zoned, but is zoned consistently, uh, inconsistently with the surrounding property, specifically the Latham property subdivision, or the county council chairman's family property. Those are both unzoned. The only difference between my property is the Cooper's house is bigger and their acreage is larger. Again, totally opposed to zoning.
Okay, thank you. All right. What comments on this, on this? All right, we appreciate all the comments. We go to our next, is the proposal of land development of the Sports Boat and RV Storage. Any pub- public comments on it? Yes, sir.
My name is John Hudson. The proposed project is fifty feet from my property line. Uh, I'd like, uh, I've had some trauma to my eyes, I can't really see y'all, I can't read. So I'd like to give y'all my talking points, and then I'd like to talk over it, best I can. Found about, I found, this came about after a zoning sign was put up. The zoning sign's supposed to be put up for fifteen days, right? Anyway, the sign wasn't up ten days. So anyway, uh, this, I, my consent is with the rest of them here. Please listen to the people for once, and so we won't have a swamp like Washington. That, listen to the people. Don't choose the ones that are getting bought off, and builders buying them off, and, and, and getting things passed like they wanted. Richmond County spent millions of dollars, they overdeveloped, and they had to spend millions to buy out subdivisions that flooded, and had to put in million-dollar detention ponds. Please, let's don't go there, I mean, seriously? We're not supposed to be cursed, we pray to God, so let's listen to Him. Let's save the earth, let's find balance. Now, the talking points is all I can say, and that's it. Uh, they, they offered the forty-foot in-easement, uh, and they want to put, they said they'd put plants in it. Then the fence would be there, I'd ask for vinyl siding, green fence. At first, I don't want it. Uh, I'm sixty-five, my bedroom's fifty feet, so I, I, y'all might have to help me on some of the talking points, but I hope I can cover them. But fishermen like to leave at three o'clock in the morning to go fishing, so my wife and I won't get no peace. And uh, so that'll be going on in the weekends, especially the weekends. The other thing is, these campers are gonna have sewer in them. Some guys is gonna dunk them there, 'cause you can't see this from the road. This ain't like fish camp or the one they wanna put behind the store, this is up in the woods here. Uh, so I'll get to smell that stuff. If they work on stuff, which I'm asking, they don't allow anybody to work on stuff over there. Oh, you got gas, you got oil, and all this stuff is gonna run down toward that creek below where the wetlands is, that does flood, 'cause it is legal to do that over there for Stevens Creek. It backs up the springs that fed from the pond that I've been brought up on for sixty years. And it's all spring-fed, so all this will get contaminated eventually, because of all this stuff. And one I thought about late, early today was, okay, I, I, it don't wanna happen, but if a camper catches fire, guess what? The trees from there go all the way to my house, and my last tree is about twenty feet from my house, so my house is gone. So I'm, I'm holding the county responsible for having a fire plug down there. 'Cause my well-being is affected. This ain't like the store in fish camp, this is my well-being, and y'all supposed to represent me, too. It ain't just a one-sided deal, uh, but, you know, I won't go there, there's no need to go to politics. So, but uh, let's see, some other things that got there is, uh, what's some of them?
Time of access, you said?
What, ma'am?
The time of access, you had a concern with that?
Oh, yeah, 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 uh, I'm asking that they can't come in there from ten PM to six PM at least, to get their boats or campers or whatever, so I can have a little, little piece. Uh, what's another one? And they don't get to work on their campers and boats in the middle of the night or anytime during the day. I mean, you know, they gonna get to come in here and do this stuff, and it's gonna be private, so you can't see them. I know they said they put cameras and stuff, but I got to deal with the thieves or whoever's over there sleeping, Tom, Dick, and Harry.
Your three, three minutes are up, sir.
Sir?
Your three minutes are up, three minutes.
Seriously? My life is on the line up there with this, and you don't wanna give me more than three minutes?
Three minutes, that's enough.
Sir?
Three minutes in this room.
If you can live with it, you pray to your God and see what he tells you about it. Have a conscience, that's what's wrong, we don't have a conscience, we ain't listening to the right people.
All right, sir, sit down.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Your own respects, sir, you know, just get it.
Okay, uh, any more on the uh, boat, RV? If not, a major subdivision for Annalee Cove, any comments on it? No comment? Major subdivision for Mad Drive, any comments? Okay, now, we appreciate all the comment, we take them into consideration. We're gonna close our public hearing, we're gonna go down to new business. Our new business is a proposal of a major subdivision at Allison Point. Blue Sky Priority LLC is proposing the development of a major subdivision at Allison Point. This subdivision would be located at intersection of Curry Town Road and Mealing Road, product ID one twenty-six, double out zero four, double out four, triple out. Now, over discussion to the planning commission.
Comments or discussions, is that what you said?
Discussion is for us, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Motion, wait, wait, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I need to recuse myself from this vote. I have a previous relationship with the uh, applicants in the past, but out of an, just abundance of caution, I need to recuse myself.
Yes, sir, okay.
Mister Presley, I believe there's a form you'll have to fill out.
Okay. Do I need to step down?
Step out.
Step out, didn't get that right yet, yeah. Now, we are down to uh, on this Allison Point, of what the uh, need a motion for, if I deny on this particular subdivision here. Yeah, gotta get a motion from someone. I think, uh.
Ju- just to help y'all, just make a motion to approve, and then you either approve or deny with your vote.
You, you can make the motion in second and discuss it, and then hold the vote, or you can have your discussion and then make any motions.
If I can't get a motion, then I guess I guess.
Mister Chairman, if there is no motion, then it dies for lack of a motion. But I would remind, and, and I have the attorney here, I would remind Count, um, the planning commission that according to state law, uh, the planning commission has to take action on an application within sixty days um, of submittal, or the application is automatically approved. That's not a count, that's not a county thing, that's a state law.
Could I? I motion that uh, I guess I can make the motion there, then. I motion that we uh, approve the uh, subdivision. In discussion, I need a second, I need a second, I need a second, I need a second. No second, no second, no second. If there's no second, then it dies, right? Die for lack of a second, right, so, believe it or not, the motion is dead.
A motion to approve or a motion to vote?
Motion period, motion period.
The motion to approve, die with lack of a second.
It died for lack of a second, okay. But a motion to deny, I get a second on that.
Are you making a motion to deny now?
Yeah, right. There's a second. We got six today, that'd be.
My only co- my only comment on this right now, at this stage, is that uh, my feelings are that I brought up in the, in the last meeting, is that uh, there's two points in the conferency plan that I do not believe that this subdivision fits, and that deals with uh, leapfrog development, and with uh, a, a, a plan that requires much larger lots in order to guarantee a septic system will work. Now, those are two things that I've seen in the conferency plan. That's one of my biggest hesitation about approving this. I, I think I'm for development in the county, but I want it to be more consistent with what we feel that that particular part of Edgefield County is uh, being used for at the current time.
The motion is to disprove the subdivision.
That was, mine was just a comment.
Okay.
Okay, uh, it, no seconds, uh, motion to oppose pond, would that be an order? Motion to oppose pond it.
We'd be after the sixty days.
Would be after.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would suggest, this is just a suggestion, that check with Mister Singletary and see what the date of submittal is, and see where you are in that sixty-day window before you continue something, and then it's automatically approved. So, um, I would, and, and he can look at it.
Uh, Mister Chairman, this development would receive automatic approval on November fourteenth, if no vote is reached by that time.
Right.
Uh, the planning commission next meets on November twelfth.
And that on November fourteen?
So, yes, two days before the fourteenth, fourteenth would be automatic approval, twelfth is when your next meeting is.
So, so what you're saying, Mister Singletary, is they could continue it, and the sixty-day deadline not kick in until after they've had an opportunity to hear it again?
It, yes, if a decision was not made by the fourteenth, it would receive automatic approval.
Right, okay. So uh, my motion in there would be, we table it until the next meeting. Get a second on that. Can I do that, right? Can I do that? Okay, can I get a second? To table it until the next meeting. Continue to, 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 continue to the next meeting. I get a second motion on that. Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, good, that's all that one. Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight, sir, 'cause he got me, I've been sitting on this night, give me a. Okay, now, proposal of land development, sportsman boat and RV storage. Pride and Pickett LLC is proposing the development of outs, self-storage facility known as Sportsman Boat and RV Storage. This development would be located off Muntown Road and Sportsman Corner, on product ID zero eighty, zero zero, zero one, zero nine, eight, triple zero. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove on that one? Can I get a second?
I'll second that with the conditions that are stipulated in, in accordance and agreement with Mister Hudson, and uh, the developer on the screening and all those applicable things that we discussed during the meeting.
Ma'am, Mister Chairman, uh, the county does have screening and buffer yard requirements. Um, this does meet those requirements.
That's what I said.
Gotta get a second.
Make sure that was clear and understood.
I got a, we got a second on that, then. All in favor of approving the uh, boat and RV storage? In discussion, in discussion, discussion on it, yeah, okay. All in favor of approving it with the condition that it mentioned, or you by raising your right hand? Propose this? I'd have it. We back on track, and I appreciate it. Proposal major subdivision Annalee Cove. JSMG Development, LLC is proposing the development of a major subdivision. Annalee Cove, this subdivision located off Woodland Lake Road, product ID one six, zero zero, zero one, zero two five, zero zero. An motion for approval or disapproval of this subdivision? You can't make another, why not?
It's the first time we've set eyes on it, I'd like to.
Oh, okay, well, you can uh.
I can make a motion to table?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to table.
To continue the next, continue, yeah, uh-huh.
Table would need to be in the first meeting.
Yeah, right, uh, continue. Yeah, right, I'll continue. Okay, got a new second?
Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before you do that, just out of, uh, abundance of caution, I'd check with Mr. Singletary again on the sixty-day
Okay.
uh, application, to make sure you're still within the window.
This development would receive automatic approval on November sixteenth.
November sixteen, that gives a time, so, any, any more discussion on it? All in favor of continuing next meeting on this article, raise your right hand? Propose it, I'd have it. Next is a proposal of major subdivision, Annalee? No, that's one I just, yeah.
One more.
Okay. Okay, Mad Drive, I got it. Aiken-Haydon Center proposes development of a major subdivision on Mad Drive, located at Highway nineteen, Parker ID one eighty-six, zero zero, 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 nine, five, zero, zero. A motion that we approve, uh, this subdivision?
Second it.
In discussion, in discussion? If not, all in favor of approving this subdivision, the right hand? Propose it, I'd have it. Okay, that's it? I think that's it, now, I have missed anything, I haven't? I have missed anything, I haven't, and that is it?
No, sir, you have not.
Okay, all this, the motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, right hand? What, you're gonna adjourn? Appreciate everybody coming. I got me off track, I didn't forget about my discussion.